All right.
All right. Well, we'll call the meeting to order and as is our typical tradition, we'll go ahead and get started with prayer and our pledge. So I believe we have Chaplain Taylor on. So we'll have Chaplain Taylor provide our, our invocation and then we'll do our pledge.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, Lord, for this day provided for us. Thank you for accounting commissioners, your Lord. This meeting today given the wisdom they need to make the right decision with them and help them now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we'll do our pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, guys. All right, the agenda has been provided. We have motion to approve the agenda. All right, Craig motion, Jim or Judy second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then consent agenda. We have motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
All right, Jew.
Give the.
Let's just do it, do what.
Judy, how about you do motion and second?
No.
All right, Judy motion, Craig, Craig second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then Erin, you want to go ahead with our regular agenda consent revisions or the consider revisions to the small business grant?
Mr. Chairman, do we have public comment?
No.
Not on there.
Yeah, not on there. Yep. All right, Erin. Where'd Erin go? Oh, there he is.
I'm here, sorry. Randy, can you share on the screen the? Thank you. So this is a revision to the small business grant program. And the reason for, I appreciate the board calling the special meeting is because the applications, we start accepting them on, on, on Monday. There's been a few changes. One change is that the county will be handling the, the, the program at this time. And instead of contracting with the chamber, contract with McGill and Associates to administer the grant program. The fee remains the same. The application process remains the same, including the changes the board made at the last meet, last meeting. I may not, I may not touch on every change. I know I emailed to the board a red line copy, but starting with the parameters, we changed from one to five employees. We, previously we had full time. And, and now it's just the word employee because we, we felt that would be fair and also it may be hard to determine whether or not the employees were full time or part time. And then you get into the definition of what is full time and what is part time. And not every, everyone, not every one agrees on what is full time and what is part time. The requirements have changed a little bit. It's still a brick and mortar business located in Rowan County that will be required to have a Secretary of State identification number ID. Also, the business of businesses located owner associated with the primary residence parcel or excluded. And this just further defines what brick and mortar means to clear up some, some possible misunderstandings. Nothing changed with number two or three, other than the employees going from full time to just employees. We did change number four. Previously it was, I think in March. We moved it to December because that's the, based on the 2019 tax returns, that's the only date that we're, would be, you know, be able to positive, positively know that they had been open since at least that date, I wonder before December 31st. And then, so here's the, the biggest change really that, that will affect who is eligible and, and who, who is not. Previously, the way it read, if, if my memory is correct, is that in order to receive, to be eligible to receive the grant, the business would, would have been closed for at least two weeks due to the governor's orders. After having a lot of conversations with the county attorney, he, he helped a whole lot. Randy helped a whole lot. McGill and Associates provided some feedback after we met with him yesterday. And why, let me just explain McGill and Associates as an engineering firm, engineering firms often have grant administrators because a lot of their projects are funded by, you know, grant funding. When, when the county does economic development projects, reuse grants, we hire administrators and sometimes they're private administrators and, and sometimes they're associated with the engineering firms. But that's, that's the reason that McGill and Associates, an engineering firm, was selected because they do have expertise in grant administration. And so after our conversation, spent a lot of time yesterday, like again, a good help from the county attorney and Siobhan and Randy going back and reading executive orders. Instead of saying required to be closed by the governor's orders, the, the two requirements is that the business could not have been classed. And I know it's worded, it's kind of strange the way it's worded, but it's, 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 it's the best we came up with at the time, is that the, the business could not be classified as a COVID-19 essential business as defined in Executive Order 121, Section 2. This means a non-essential business. So if you go back and, and if you recall when there was a shutdown or a stay at home order, or, or, you know, the language that they, they gave, we were told, you know, the, the state, as I understood the order, that if you aren't going to an essential business, or you aren't going to the grocery store, you're supposed to stay home. So by changing it to businesses that weren't essential, there is an assumption that they were closed because you weren't supposed to be going. You weren't supposed to be leaving your home unless you were going to an essential business. We also included restaurants because restaurants, the, the best I can tell were allowed to remain open. Well, were allowed to remain open, but you couldn't go inside. The dining rooms were closed. So this clears it up to where restaurants, which, you know, restaurants in a lot of the service businesses were the ones that possibly were hit the hardest with COVID. Although they weren't technically required to be closed, they just, you couldn't go inside. You know, some restaurants were able to, you know, provide to-go meals and takeout and delivery. But, you know, just, just as we all know, we all lived through it. When this first came out, every, you know, everyone was trying to learn how to do business in this new environment. So, you know, I, I think it's reasonable to think that restaurants certainly struggled and, 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 and had a lot of difficulty. So we added, wanted to make sure that restaurants are authorized. The next page. This is, the business will, will not be eligible if they meet any of the following. This really hasn't changed a lot, other than we did admit a sentence about realist, real estate firms that invested in property. And one reason the staff felt we should admit that because it's just going to be hard to prove whether or not someone does or doesn't do that. But what we did add is two things, E and F. So if you, if you go back and remember when we were told to stay at home. And, you know, if you can remember, the governor's order had what was essential and not, and non- essential. Those that were considered non-essential were allowed to receive approval from the govern, from, from the government to operate. So this is saying if you were a non-essential business, but you received approval from the North Carolina Department of Revenue to be deemed essential, then you're not eligible for this grant. So those businesses that got approval to continue to operate and be essential are not, are not eligible. And another one we, F, which is new, is that business must still be operational. That's something that I had left out and that's pretty important. You know, that the business is still open. With that said, after long discussions with McGill and Associates and one of their principals, it's, it was, it was decided and they have agreed to, and, and we will assist that, that any business that, that submits an application and submits all the paperwork and is qualified will be personally visited by McGill and Associates to verify that the business is open and exists. So there will be a, a verification, not only through paperwork, but also through a, a SOT visit. You know, to make sure that the business is there. Use of funds, that, that stayed the same. Documentation changed a little bit. We added the prior, the prior documentation, I believe, read most recent tax return, and we just put 2019. That's something that the chamber helped us identify as something we needed to do. IRS Form 941. W-9 form is something that was identified yesterday. As we understand it, we're required to provide, you know, tax forms to the federal government. If you provide a grant to a business and it's not, and they don't have to pay it back, it's reportable income. So a W-9 form will be required. Also, the W-9 form is something that the county, we, we need that to pay, to write the check. So we'll need that documentation. Number five is new, and this is any privileged state, federal or local operating license required to perform their business. This is, this is an idea that came from McGill and Associates. I think it's a good idea. It, it, you know, we want to make sure if we, if we approve a barber that works in a barber shop for this loan, that they have a license in North Carolina to be a barber. The same thing with a, a tattoo artist. We want to make sure if a tattoo artist applies and we provide a check that they have the, the appropriate license to, you know, to, to provide tattoo services. Same thing with a massage therapist. We want to make sure that they have the appropriate license and their licenses are up to date when we provide the check. Number six is, that's new. That is a certification form for the receipt of grand, grant funds. And that's a form that we will create that basically say, you know, before they receive the funds, that all the information is true and correct and they understand, you know, that they may be required to pay the money back if it, if it's not true, et cetera. And basically just an acknowledgement that, you know, they understand the rules. And then number seven is the Secretary of State Identification Number. Now, this will not be required to, to put on the application because we understand that some businesses may not have that. But that's something that can be very easily obtained at the Register of Deeds or online at the Secretary of State for, for any business. If a business is already registered, they, they, they have this. Any LLC or corporation is going to have a state, Secretary of State Identification Number. And we did add additional guidelines. If an applicant is selected and fills out the application correctly, they're going to receive an email or a phone call. And I asked Randy earlier today, I said, well, how are we going to know that, that, that the email they entered on the application, that they didn't make a mistake? A part of the application process, they're going to have, is going to require them to verify their application by, by email they receive. So, so they won't be able to complete the application as, as, as I understand it, without verifying their email through this application process. So we will, we will have the correct email address. They're going to be notified that when they apply, that, that they're going to receive an email or a phone call for those that, that turn in a paper application that they've been selected. They'll receive one email or one phone call and they'll have three business days to provide all the information in Section D. If the information is not provided for any reason, the applicant will be disqualified and will go to the next applicant that, you know, as this, you know, this is based on a first come, first served basis. So we'll go to the next applicant that is in line that, that missed the cutoff. With that said, if the board would like, I can go, I, I can get into McGill's contract. And then the board can ask questions, or you can ask questions now. Is, is it okay with the board if I go ahead and cover a little bit of McGill's contract?
Erin, is that included in this, this program, their contract, or is that a separate item?
It's a separate item on this agenda. That's online. So that they're both tied together.
I understand that, but I'm just saying as far as voting for something, should, if there are two items, should we not break them apart to vote on?
Oh, yeah. But I would just, if you want me to talk about the contract first, or if you want to address this and then talk about the contract, it's up to the board.
All right, any questions with Erin on the updated information regarding the program? Thank you to Randy, Siobhan, Erin, Jay. Those guys, we had to build this from the ground up and so it's been been a lot of work, Erin. We appreciate it. Erin's done a lot of work on this. So thank you, Erin, very much. All right, do we have a motion to approve the amended plan?
Aye.
All right, Craig. Jim second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Erin.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is the, the agreement. This is a standard agreement we use for services. If you'll scroll down, Randy. You know, it requires insurance. It requires that, you know, all, all the normal things like that. But if you'll scroll on down, Randy, to services provided. So they're, they're agreeing, and they have agreed to this contract. Today, we worked with them for, for, and last night, but they're going to administer the, the COVID-19 grant program in compliance with the adopted program, which is Exhibit B, which is what the board just approved. And they're also agreeing to comply with all federal guidelines in the CRF Fund Guidance for State, Territorial, Local, Tribal Governments. It was updated to September 2nd. This includes reviewing the, from the county and certifying that applicant meets the number of employees, that the applicant is a, is a for-profit business, registered with the state of North Carolina and has a Secretary of State Identification Number. Number three addresses the franchise. Four addresses certify what we just talked about. Five, they have an attorney on staff that will certify that the business has not filed for bankruptcy in the last three years. They will certify that the business does not have any tax liens. They will certify with the county's help that there aren't any property taxes owed. They will certify that the business is currently open and they will visit in person each business to verify that the business is open and exists. In addition to that, they're going to create a file. And in that file, it's going to have a checklist of everything we just mentioned. And there's going to be a statement of certification from the grant administrator stating that all the parameters have been met. Then there'll be this certification form for receipt that will be executed by the business. Any privilege or operating license will be included, the W-9 form, the application, the IRS Form 941. A copy of the Secretary of State Soon Business Name Certificate, which is what you can get online or at the Register of Deeds, or if the company is a corporation or LLC or partnership professional entity, their most recent business filings. Tax returns, certification that the business does not have delinquent Rowan County property taxes. And really, this last one is kind of an error. Now that I see it, it should only have, the county attorney will research each business to determine if there are judgments. But the sentence that's already in there is not going to hurt anything and, and they've already agreed to this. So it's okay with the board just to adopt it with, with, with the, the repeat of what was already said. But JD's feels strongly that we should, and, and I, that we should make sure that, you know, business is getting, and, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, that businesses that are receiving this grant don't have judgments out, you know. So he, Jay is, 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 is going to assist us in going to the courthouse and making sure there aren't judgments out. The term of the agreement runs through December 30th. Once this agreement is executed, the county will pay the provider $17,500. And then the remaining $17,000 upon the completion of the grant administration. E-Verify insurance, they're going to be required to have standard insurance that we, we have. And that's pretty much the contract.
Erin. Erin.
Yes, sir.
Who, who actually writes the check?
Okay, so Randy, if you'll scroll back up to one through 11, what's going to happen is they're going to put one through 11 in a, in an electronic file. And somehow IT, and, and then the engineering companies, IT, they're going to work together to encrypt this data and get it to the county. So we're not going to have possession of anything until it is put together and, and approved. So we'll receive this encrypted file that has one through 11. And the most important sheet is going to be that they, that, that the, the administrator, number two, is certifying that this individual application has met all the grant, grant parameters. That's going to go to our internal auditor, Derek. Derek is going to review, check for number two and then make sure, you know, one through 11 is included in this encrypted file. And then he will send an email to Jim Howden, you know, stating it is okay to pay the business. And then Jim Howden will, he, we don't write the check, but the, you know, the computer will write the check. So that's, so we will be writing the check. But it will only be after the grant administrator authorizes the check to be written.
And how long will we keep this information on these individuals? Will we at any point get rid of that?
I, I, I have not looked at the record and retention laws on this particular information, but I, I talked to Randy today. We're, once we get the encrypted file and we paid the, the company, the, the business, we will print a paper file and we've ordered a special fireproof, lockable, very secure, or we're going to order, we've talked about ordering it, that will be kept on, on the, on the county managers' in the county manager's office or one of the offices near the county manager's offices. And we will keep that as long as record and retention requires. It, we may have to keep it forever. I know there's some things we're required to keep forever. At one point, I thought it was 10 years. I'm just not 100% sure, but I do know we're going to have to keep it for a while. So you know, the encrypted electronic data, you know, Randy will keep that, but I also want to have a, a hard copy that's in a fireproof vault because, or, 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 you know, filing cabinet. Because basically, you know, until the federal government is done with their audits, regardless of the record and retention policies, th- this information is worth about $350,000 for the county. Because if we don't have it and we can't prove, you know, this money was spent per the federal guidance, we're responsible to pay the federal government back. So we're, we're going to, we're going to take all the steps we can to make sure there's, there's duplicate, both encrypted electronic files and a, a hard copy in a fireproof locked filing cabinet.
All right. Jay, Erin. Randy, thank you all. Any other questions for Erin? All right, then we'll need a motion to approve using McGill and Associates as our grant administrator for this program.
Aye.
All right, Craig motion, Judy second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks. I think that's it. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask the Salisbury Post, Ben, I'm available, Ben, if you want to call me after the meeting. And we have, we've put together a a poster, if you will, that may be beneficial to, to you.
Hey, Erin, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know. Now I can't hear you for some reason.
All right, go ahead, Ben. All right, well, that's fine. We'll, Ben, we'll just have Ben call Erin after the meeting. All right, well, uh, that's fine. We'll, uh, Ben, we'll just have Ben call Aaron after the meeting. If there's nothing else, then.
Everybody.
Yeah, I have the Thanksgiving motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All right, Craig motion, Judy second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, I'll be safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.